Give it a minute. Matt, did you hear from anyone who is not able to attend?
I did not hear from anybody.
Okay. We'll just hold on a moment then before officially starting.
Show up, it could be, is the snow so, so bad up there?
Yeah, we can't make it from our kitchens to our living rooms. It's, it's just so deep. Or home office or whatever space we're using.
Yes, dining room.
So you've got a camera of the room, but there's nobody in here but Melinda and I.
Okay. Gotcha.
We're on all kinds of cameras.
Yeah. That's great. How are you, John? You're muted. You're still muted. Oh, there we go.
Yes, I thought I would sit in tonight and listen to see what's been going.
Yeah, I was, I was kind of thinking that I feel like the hack should be here with us.
Emily made a strong request.
I see.
Typical, typical public participation percentages when you make a strong request that people jump in, you get, you know, one out of six, one out of seven.
Yeah.
That's pretty good. So thank you, John.
Well, we just got done our meeting for hack, you know, 10 minutes ago. So some of them may just be taking a short break. We were encouraged to come and if anybody knows Emily, you don't want to cross her, you know?
Oh, boy. Well. Um. Let's definitely hold off on minutes, but I guess we could. What would you recommend, Matt?
I can just give you a couple things.
Okay.
So. With, with what's going on tonight, I'll be headed over to the select board at about 10 after 7. I'll be there as long as it takes to pass all the bylaw amendments. At least that's my sincere hope. I, I think it'll be about 30 or 40 minutes. Based on what I've been hearing so far. The other thing. I'd seen some conversation between a couple of commission members who are working on the annual report. I was glad to see that. And we're going to try to bring that back to the whole group in the next couple of meetings. And between when I announced the meeting and tonight, there was a message from the racial equity partnership that I was asked to share with the group, which I did by select board to the planning commission in regard to that. But, you know, it had to do with housing and housing affordability and, and the equity implications of providing housing at all levels of affordability in Williston. So, you know, happy to take up discussion or answer folks' questions offline individually on that. I do hope we reconnect with Crystal Lee and the racial equity partnership at a future meeting anyway. So we stay tuned for more discussion there.
Great. Okay. Well, that's great. We now have a quorum. Hi, everyone. And so I officially call to order and we can review the minutes. So. Let's maybe start with a motion to approve the minutes and then we'll have a discussion.
Did you move, Kate?
Yeah, I can move.
Okay.
Are those October, whatever it said at the top, or are they November 2?
I believe they're November 2.
Oh, yes. Yeah. That's right. Okay, other corrections or discussion? I had a couple little comments that I realized that we were, our comments were kind of flying fast. And the minutes definitely, you know, it's a struggle to keep up. But a few things were hard to understand, like the, the gist of things for someone who wasn't there. So I had a couple of suggestions that were all either spelling things out or clarifying. There was one question mark right there at the bottom of your screen. The paragraph beginning, shape and noted. Focus through COVID on outdoor opportunities, local.
I think it was farmers markets far into table. And food system support. The idea was, the idea there was, are there any new opportunities for economic development and things that CCRPC should be assisting? So I, I think what's missing there is just local farmers markets.
Oh, okay. Do we have somebody who's editing live? Um, thank you. So I had just fleshed out a few things in there to make it make more sense. And I think a little bit farther down to. So nothing major, the, the big crossed out thing that you see there was just a matter of the order of the conversation. So the Mansard roof thing was, I just, I think it was all one conversation and, but the minutes had sort of split it into two things and it was going back and forth. So I just consolidated the comments about Manson roofs and then let this other comment about watchtowers be its own bullet point. Did anyone else have any comments or questions or edits?
I apologize because I quickly reviewed this, but I didn't make edits. I didn't go into it in edit mode. And the only thing I was thinking about is a little farther down, Melinda, if you're the one scrolling. On the, there we go, on the Wilson Energy Committee, you've gone just past it. It's just, I clarified that the committee charged had the energy committee reporting to us, the planning commission, but what we had sent to the select board had number one be to hire a energy coordinator and then the energy committee would support the coordinator. So I was just, my comment was just that I hope we quickly move to that stage where things are aligned with what the energy plan says. Right there after that paragraph that Matt gave a brief overview, I had a comment, but I'm okay that it's not there. It's.
Yeah, I don't recall that we actually made that. Well, I guess we did make that point. Okay, anyone else? Kate? I think Alex and Jill, you weren't there. Oh, Sheila's on now. Sheila, did you have any comments on minutes?
Um, no, I did not. I just ran through them briefly and it looked, the content looked fine, but I did not line it. Sorry, I was on earlier, but I was under my husband's name. I apologize.
Oh, okay. Who is that masked man? And Kate, are you all set with minutes or do you have any comments?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. So let's, let's call a vote then. All in favor approving the minutes as amended? Say aye. We're raising hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's, is that three in favor? Sheila, I didn't see your vote. But maybe you're waiting. Okay. Okay, so four in favor. And opposed? And abstentions? To Jill and Alex, thank you. Okay, so the minutes are approved. Okay, so.
Can you tell me again who seconded that motion?
I think Shapen did. Was Kate, Kate made the motion, right?
Yep.
Go ahead and say, if no one else volunteers, go ahead and say I did. I think I jumped into your thing about comment. So sure, I can second it.
Sorry, it was a little with people trying to unmute. It was a little confusing there.
And I don't know if you had it, Melinda, but it passed with Alex and Jill abstaining.
Got it. Thank you.
Great. Okay, so we had a quick little summary from Matt on a few things that were coming up as we waited for a quorum. But is there any other public comment? Things that are not on the agenda?
Yes.
Shapen, go ahead.
It's, it's just that it's not on the agenda and this is the time of year that we had asked to have input into the budget more from an energy perspective. And I wondered where that stood. I was sort of expected to see something.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead, Melinda.
Yeah, the, the capital budget review is going to be on the December 7th agenda.
Okay, so that's the same schedule as last year, two years, which we were feeling was too late. Yeah.
So Matt and I had a conversation about this last week in our, in our weekly meeting. That's the weeks that we don't meet as a group. And I asked him that very question and it, you know, a lot of it depends on the, I'm not excusing or dismissing our desire to see it earlier and our wish for feedback. I, I definitely agree with those things. The, I think the tricky thing that Matt alluded to was the how difficult it is for each department to get their budget put into view. And Melinda, I don't know if you have any to add to that or, or you can kind of contextualize it for us.
Um. Yeah, it's, it's just that it does take a while for the department to develop a budget. And I know there have been a couple of things this year that have come up that are new. And, and so like this, today I just had a, a final meeting with our finance manager to discuss another potential budget item. And so that was like, you know, that's going to go into the draft capital improvement budget. So that's, I guess, you know, I, yeah, I understand. And we, it's definitely been on our mind that it's been, it's been late and we've been, you know, struggling with getting, you know, getting you this stuff ahead of time. Also, I think it's been compounded by just working on form-based code and, and having the, the need to kind of focus on that as well. So my apologies and speaking for Matt, his, you know, our, our apologies for, you know, being late with this, but uh, yeah.
Go ahead, Shapen.
First of all, I want to say, Melinda, you shouldn't apologize at all. It's not you. And, but the point I think we were feeling is that for two years, we felt as though the, some of the goals of the town plan were not being met in the, in what we were seeing. And we were reviewing a proposed budget. And so it was a big lift to change it. What we were looking for was to participate in the writing of those budgets a little bit because until we have an energy coordinator, there's nobody on staff who's sort of looking out for the parts of the town plan that have been added recently, like the energy plan. So I think we were looking to be a participant rather than reviewing a budget. And so we wanted to see an early draft and, and be able to participate. So I, that's a message in my view really for the town manager and the select board and the finance director, not for you. So I'm, I'm just disappointed that that message didn't seem to make it through and that once again will be reacting to a proposed budget, which puts the person that wrote the budget on the defensive rather than us being shoulder to shoulder working with them.
Thank you, Shapen. Sheila, go ahead.
Yeah, maybe Shapen, one of the things we could be clear about for next round is that I don't, I don't feel the need to have like some big formal final polished thing. More. I don't, I mean, I don't want to ask staff to come to our meetings. I know they're late and nuts after work hours, but there's a way to get like a bulleted list or you know, just some, it, it doesn't need to be something fancy or, or, or final. And if it's easier to do it somehow in a meeting or presentation, or maybe, you know, one or two of us can meet with people during the day so they don't have to do it at night. But yeah, something where we're, we're kind of in on the ground floor a little bit more. And, and hopefully maybe that would be less of a lift.
Okay, great. Well, I'm, I think this will be in the minutes and and so we will try to follow up on it, right? Any other comments or whether regarding that particular issue or public comments? All right. Shapen, go ahead.
I just want to say, because Belinda was apologizing, I just think we have an amazing staff and I thank them.
Definitely. Totally agree. I, I also think we don't know how lucky we are. Jill, go ahead. Oh, you have a, oh, that was, oh, sorry, that's clapping, not raising. Okay. Sometimes these icons are a little confusing. All right, great. Okay, with that, then let's close the public comment section and move to our agenda item. Few minutes late, so we'll just keep that in mind. And I do just want to reiterate that I would prefer that we end as close to nine as possible. This is, I believe, our main task tonight. And so we don't have other items on the agenda. But it, as we have seen, it's very easy to get very much into the weeds and, which is partly what we're supposed to do, but I also just encourage everyone to kind of keep an eye on the time. Okay, so I think that Jeff, I believe you are going to lead us through the next piece of the architectural standards. Is that correct?
Yes, I put quotation marks around lead. We'll all, we'll all muddle through together. And I would also invite everyone to help. We can all keep track of time. Last time we got down into the weeds and it was great. And maybe they were the most difficult sections, but we went through, I think, two of the, of the topic areas. So these, the rest of these are going to be easy. He says. Windows and doors, this gets pretty complex, but I think, and any people have comments on the, the images on this, the way the windows and doors are set up, there is a special section for shop fronts. However, in, you know, in the, in the, all the urban general, someone, the urban general itself, which is going to be a big part of Taft Corners, they, it's very flexible. It's like the form-based code that lets you choose an awful lot. So here we're showing all different kinds of windows, including a couple that involve shop fronts. But again, the, the, the text on this page and the images are not code. They're intended to try and kind of head people in the right direction. So with that said, I'm easy going to the next page where we get into the details. Again, these are, these are, a lot of the items in the code are like this one. They apply, they're really about what's visible from the street. So you might look out if you're in a, in a, if, if you live on the second floor of a building in Taft Corners in 2030, and you look out the back window across the block, you might see some windows that wouldn't fit this list because they're much less control on the inside. So the applicability refers to things that are clearly visible from the street space. Kind of thinking there's some new people here. And that's very specifically defined, but materials, I put the, the the light transmission of at least 75% in there in, in pink to get your attention because that's, I'd say that's a good thing. But it sometimes gets to be a technical issue and there's a conversation about that. We understand that 75% is pretty reasonable. So that said, configurations and techniques, this, there are limits on size. And one of the things I mentioned at the beginning of our last session, in, in this, especially in the architectural standards, we're trying to get a certain level of quality and also place something that, that feels like it's not from California or anywhere USA. So, but we're also trying to get a human scale and we're dealing with, this is all going to be brand new construction. So there will be some standards here that you, you'll be able to say, but I know there's a storefront. If you like Church Street or a building on Church Street, there's a storefront on Church Street and its windows are bigger than that or something. You'll be able to find a historic example that doesn't meet these standards, but some of these dimensions and configurations are, we're trying to deal with brand new construction. And architects who have a very different education than the architects or builders who built those old buildings are, and they're using them with different materials. So that said, I see a hand up. Shapen?
Yeah, I have a question right there. We're on page 51, number four, configuration. And then the number vertical bench, except for transom windows above the entrance. And does that mean that we can't have transit windows other places than above an entrance?
Well, this, this is really, and we might for belt and suspenders add at within a window or something like that. So it should not mean that the idea is that this is the, the opening. But I think that's probably if you're interpreting that way. Is anyone else kind of having that same feeling?
I just wanted to make sure we weren't saying you couldn't have transit windows other places.
No, there are, there are specific mentions in the shop front.
Okay.
Okay, so I got, I have a, I have a note there.
And while I've got the floor, I'll just say that this page made a lot of sense to me and I didn't have any corrections to the red things. But page 55, I don't understand. And so when we get there, that's the facade composition, which talks about window dimensions a lot.
I understand. Okay. All right, anyone?
Jeff, I had a couple of questions from this page. As far as materials for doors, for instance, is, so is there a specific pro, like, what do you call it? I'm sorry, I'm out of words today. I've been in too many meetings. Is, is our fiberglass doors prohibited? I'm looking at 3D, I'm sorry, 3B, boy, doors shall be wood, clad wood, glass, steel, or any combination thereof. And I know a lot of particularly fireproof doors, we are, and more insulated ones are fiberglass. I mean, it looks like, I mean, they're clad, so they look like steel or something on the outside, but.
You're right. Yeah. That, yeah, thinking about it.
Jeffrey, can I ask a question? I have a question about that same thing. And I, I missed last meeting when you guys talked about materials. But I had made some notes prior to that meeting about like there being no mention of like composites. Right? And this is Vermont with the snow. Like I would imagine things like, you know, the doors being made of wood or wood composite or you know, solid PVC or shutters being made of wood, wood composite or solid PVC would make a lot more sense given the weather.
Yeah, something, A, you've got a point and B, somewhat mitigated by a conversation you missed. But there is an approved, there will be an approved synthetic materials list. The standard for getting on that list, and this is, I told, I told Matt, it might, I asked him if he was afraid it was going to be a a headache. He's not worried. The standard for putting on that list is equivalent or better.
And I, I saw the reference to that in the previous section about approved alternate materials or, yeah.
Yeah, that said, there are going to be some times, and I think the, the, the point about the doors is one of them where we might just go ahead and say, because and I have to admit, Megan, when you said that, I had a little bit of a, I wish I'd said that or written that earlier. It's a very common thing. And I don't think I have one on my house, but I, I remember looking at them and I don't think, I don't think there's, it's not an inherent lower quality. So I, I would feel like we should just go ahead and.
To Alex's point, we just replaced a wood door, which was failing with fiberglass one in our, as our main entrance. And it looks great. So I, I think form-based code would approve, even though we're not in that zone. I have another question. On the same page, in the configurations and techniques, I, I just need some clarification because I don't understand what is being said. Under 4A5, Roman numeral five. So windows must correspond to the clear height within a building and may not span across building structure such as floor structural and metal mechanical thicknesses. And I just, I like, I read that six times. It makes sense.
That's because, that's because you're a normal person. And you didn't go to architecture school where they work your sensibilities. There, there's a lot of, I call it modernistic and a lot of, I mean, not, and a lot of just bad architecture. If, sorry if anybody has a house in Boca Raton, but we all like to make fun of the, we call them the Boca bunkers. But there, there's a lot of bad architecture where instead of having a window that's actually open, which is a room behind it, the window maybe go two stories, but it has nothing to do with actually the house. Oh, go away. Sorry, somebody from Yugoslavia is texting me.
I thought it was Boca Raton. They heard you.
They're calling, but a lot of architecture, sometimes kind of glass and steel, international style architecture will have like a a wall that's glass and then where there's structure, they'll have black glass. Or they'll just have a window, a curtain, a, a literal, they call it a curtain wall. It's all glass. The idea is just keeping the architecture a little more simple, a little more, I'd say Vermont, but it's really everywhere. So you can imagine a, a bad, a bad house and attract bad track development that has the door that's two, you know, the door that's as big as the whole house. But doesn't fit it, that, that kind of a thing. So.
So somebody will understand this. The relevant people will.
It will be more of you, you'll certainly, if somebody submits something that doesn't meet this, you would, it would, you definitely point to this.
I, Megan or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Jeff, I, I raised.
Jeff is running it now.
Okay, Jeff. I actually raised this two meetings ago, we first looked at this and I was just concerned about stairwells. And I think you should be able to have things that span stories over a stairwell and Jeff, you said absolutely. So I just want to make sure the wording doesn't prevent that.
Yes, and then my, and we'll, we'll talk to staff and make sure that, and my, part of my answer was a stair hall is actually a room that goes vertically.
Yes, yeah, yeah, you did say that. And I just want to make sure that it's clear and.
A mezzanine in the back and a double height. They can have a huge window.
Yes. We also talked about the fact that our own town hall breaks this code because the windows span two stories because of how it's retrofitted. You know what I mean? The windows are partway in the upstairs, partway in the downstairs. And while I have the floor, I only had one other comment on this page, Jeff, and that's on C upper story windows. 40% being operable, I think is a reach. And I would have made that more like 20%.
Okay. I was hoping somebody, go, go Kate.
What, what is your thought process, Japen?
Operable is generally not as energy efficient and it also could be a hazard on a third or fourth story or even a second story. And when you look at mass buildings that are fairly massive or urban, they generally have very small parts that operate. And I just didn't want to, I agree with making sure that there are operable components, but I didn't think 40% was the right amount.
Was there another raised hand? I would, oh, Megan.
I was just gonna say operable windows are more expensive and the risk, the risk you have with allowing more inoperable windows is a lot of cheap windows. But hopefully that won't, that will have enough checks and balances. So that won't really happen.
Well, I mean, I, I think people should be able to open a window. 20% is pretty low.
And, and I wanted to push back on that, Japen, you're probably completely shocked that I would, you're not used to me disagreeing with you. But I would, I would push back then on a little bit because in, in, in cities that were incredibly dense before, you know, we thought we didn't have to pay any attention. We had the fossil fuels and we decided we could ignore Mother Nature and just have all our HVAC internalized. The buildings and cities absolutely had windows that opened. It's kind of a, it's a later development. And I understand that a window, an opening window has to, for energy efficiency, has to be able to close and seal. But I would, I would argue that an operable window, we're not talking about a 1950s double hung, but a, but a modern operable window actually would be more energy efficient because in the, the several months that you have glorious summer up there, you can open the windows and have, you know, cross ventilation and get rid of indoor air pollution and. Okay.
So I would just challenge people to look at buildings that are modern that they like and see what they think. And I feel like if we say 40% must be operable, we'll wind up with small windows.
Well, we, we do have a minimum. We do have a minimum window percentage, although it's pretty low, but that's.
Yeah. And I think windows are good. And I would, I think in terms of energy efficiency, bigger windows let more sun warmth come in and so forth. And I, I just feel like we should, yeah, I just feel like that's restrictive, but I also will go with the majority by all means. So we don't need to talk about it more. Thanks.
Taylor also reminds us in the chat that these are minimums. And so they could be, they could come in higher.
Yeah, I don't really like the idea of relying on builders, though.
Yeah, true. Good, good point. I, I did have one other comment on this page, if, but only if we're done with operable windows. Are we okay with that? I, I wonder. I, I haven't gone through everything with a fine tooth comb looking for this, but in 4D, you, you say garage doors, when a lot is adjacent to an alley, any garage doors shall face toward the alley. And I, I guess this is maybe one of my little pet peeves. I would love to have as few garage doors as possible facing the street. And yeah, I know, I know that you're sympathetic to that, Jeff. We have seen some in progress proposals where there's just a row of, you know, garages in the front and no sort of people orientation. So I don't know if there's a way to, to kind of put that into form based code, like to me having. Okay, so it's, it's just not in here. Maybe it's in the form, the building form piece?
Yes, actually.
I haven't read that yet.
Okay, well, there's, it's a good, important piece to, to keep in mind. There's a line that everybody's going to have rear access and there, the exceptions to that, there, I don't want to say a hundred percent, but there may be a, a small, a tiny percentage of places that are single sided lots. But even those were, they're set up so that you can come around to the back. I don't think we have anything that's so shallow. Somebody has to come in from the front or even have a curb cut. And everybody's supposed to have alleys low parking and loading from the rear. So it's, yes. There's effectively, you can't put a garage door facing. Now you might have a big development that would have like an entry to a parking structure, but then, then that's going to be, you have a 30 foot parking setback and your controls on that. So we're really talking about no, none of the sad stuff that's happening up on the Essex Alliance Church property. So this is as close as it's going to come. You're really going to have to go inside the block down an alley to see a garage door. Is it possible we're done with windows and doors? Okay, we're moving along in a clip. Shop fronts. A quick point, the way, the way the code and the form standards, standards are written, the shop front is basically, it's the urban general building. So all, everything that goes with it, except the ground floor is instead of being could be residential or office, just regular windows. There's a, there's a limited place where, and we hope it's right avenue. The code says you have to build shop fronts and that's, think of your classic shop front, big windows, retail. And.
I'll venture a first comment if nobody has any. The only thing that stuck out to me here is the, the red text that you have here about roll up garage doors, only that I've seen a lot of great examples in Burlington and other cities of clear panel, roll up garage doors, like a glass or Plexi, right, that are for restaurants and such.
Okay, let me ask you, because we have, yeah, this, this is something that was a, a prior place we worked in Iowa, which was, they really, this was a historic thing and they were, they were keen on this, but we had a conversation with staff. The way that we've worded it here, our opinion is that this would prevent garage doors. And we can, we may want to be more clear about this, but it wouldn't prevent doors that roll up like garage doors. In fact, if you look, some, some supplied by Emily, but I believe on the very last page of this section. Yes, the very last page, there, let's see, there's one, two, three, it's page 67. There are one, two, three pictures on the upper left of page 67. I know, anyone trying to follow this, of, of doors that I think, I think it was the top two that, that Emily's not here to defend herself, so I'll blame her. That Emily found as basically saying what you said, you know, these are, I don't know if she said these are cool. That's, that's my wording. But the feeling is this would prevent somebody from, and I have, I have seen it, literally putting a garage door. So the idea is if somebody's going to do the roll up kind, it's really a higher, it's a higher, sorry to say this, it's a higher class garage door. And there are also issues with, with literal garage doors really getting them to seal. You know, it can be pretty good if that's your workshop, but to, to have energy sealing and every, those, those doors don't seal too well. And something that's really custom made or made for like a restaurant front. So short answer is we think you can do that. I think the ones that go sideways are nicer, but.
Yeah, I agreed with the comments, but I just, I think it bears some clarification in a final draft. But as I read it, it's not allowed and I wouldn't want to dissuade an architect who doesn't, you know, ask because they read it and say, ah, you know, obviously I can't do this.
Yeah, okay, that, that makes sense. Well, I'm trying not to say if an architect reads it, they would try, if they said he can't do it, most architects would then try and do it.
Yeah, well, true.
Okay, I just put a note to, to clarify what is, what is allowed. Okay. And then, you know, there's some, there's some funny rules in here about E3E specifying, you have to be able to see in, that's so that you're actually looking at something and not a display window. Really, really being militant about this, there being a communication between the inside and the outside. Which to make, because this is supposed to be the most on, on the main street, whatever our, our, our main street is, like ride avenue, supposed to be the real focus. This is the hot, the hot point of pedestrian activity. And I know colleagues who have had some real horror stories, like they built a storefront and then they put two by four studs and sheet rock right behind it because the builders weren't used to that kind of a world.
I thought this was a great addition. I, I think, I think you need it for exactly that. We don't want any Boskov store windows.
Yeah, and all those businesses, they don't need to do that. Okay, shall we move on to awnings and canopies? Next page.
Sorry, can I just have a very quick question? I just didn't understand 3H, what a string course is?
Oh, it's, it's, if you were to look at a, at a building that had a string course, it would be easy. It's like a strip where there's a, a set of stone, a stone detail or a set of special bricks that might protrude. If you look at, let me see, I would, I would say if you look at the, the bottom of page 50, the bottom right, you might say that that white line. You're getting your exercise, that, that white line sort of at the top of the storefront where the columns sort of sit on, that could be called a string course. It's like a, some, I've heard people call it an expression line, which is actually less physical. It's, it's something that actually that, that differentiation, it tends to happen anywhere if somebody's building a storefront. But you can see, and I'm sure you'll see on any main street, and I know I saw on Church Street, where the ground floor of an old building is obviously, obviously been changed. And that, that string course gives you a, gives them a place to stop. So you can kind of mix and match. Mr. Potato Head, the ground floors. But it's also sort of a division that makes the architecture a little bit nicer.
Japen. And Shayla, I think on page 52, the center top picture shows it well and string courses and masonry term. So it means you're running a lateral, you know, horizontal, a horizontal break of masonry. And I, at first, when I read this, thought it was maybe a little bit too restrictive because there's so many ways to divide it. But I think after watching the video that Matt linked for us from that guy talking about the relationship, it just said it separates the street facing view of the ground floor from the privacy of the upper floors. And so that's what, that's the peeping, I think.
I just wanted to add on that, that if you look at page 53 in the upper right photo, the string course also adds a sort of visual horizontal line kind of going literally toward the horizon. If, if building after building has a similar kind of line integrated into it, it's kind of more pleasing in that way. Just kind of in an aesthetic sense. And then in a very practical sense, I wonder if it also functions to some degree as a drip edge in our wet climate.
Yes, if it's, if it's properly executed, it really should be a drip edge. All right. Awnings and canopies. And I will tell you, this is, this is, there are a couple of sections here and this is one of them where this set of architectural standards kind of made a goose up in prescription and detail for this and a couple of earlier codes, it started to inch up. So we're, this is an extra careful piece. And if somebody feels like this is too much, say so, please, please say so, but.
I'm happy to make a first comment again. Japen, you have your hand up. I only saw, one is a question, what's the intent of 4D? Why no lighted canopies?
That's, that's one of those things along with 4E, although 4E is more, I think, 4E, I'll, I'll start out by saying 4E is really subjective and a style thing. It's and it's interesting, since I was a young lad doing form based codes and architectural standards way back, there's been a prejudice that one quarter cylinder canopies just associated with cheap, with cheap retail. And I think there's some truths to that, but I just want to be upfront, 4E is really subjective. About lighting, you can have lighting, but the idea of illuminating the canopy is kind of in that same, same category. It's just.
Oh, I see. You're not talking about down lighting. You're talking about lighting the canopy, like it's like, like where you have like a thin material and you try to make it glow.
Like, yeah, you make it a light.
Gotcha. I understand. So internal illumination. I understand it better now. So no comment on it. The only thing that stuck out to me was the second half of F. So 4F says like no brackets were cables or chains from above, but the very first picture, and I know the pictures aren't illustrative, but the very first picture to me is, is, is a nice design for canopy and is already what we have in some other places in the town, like the new healthy living and it looks pretty darn good. So.
Those are allowed.
It's supported, it is supported by cables from above.
They shall be mounted to the building wall and supported either from below by brackets or from above.
Yeah, I'm putting the word knot in there with my brain and just reading it. All right. Nevermind. I'm all good. Thanks.
And, and it's a, I, I would think that 775 would look a little weird if it were just sticking out there without those. Even, even that little minimal bit gives you some idea that it's, it's real and it's not going to.
Fall on my head. I agree. I was confused. So, all right. That's my brain.
Does any, Kate?
Um, well, I was actually going to say that I did not like that first picture. It looks extremely, that particular one, it looks extremely city, like big city like. And I guess that the one next to it, that one has, looks like has cables. It's slightly better, you know, in my opinion, for a place like Williston. But I was going to. But I was going to, to say, I don't, I'm not sure about the cables idea. The other ones are, you know. And then what about the snow? Are those like, those are very flat.
They've got to be, they've got to be strong enough to support a, a big hunk of snow. It is one of the things about steel that it can support things that it looked like it shouldn't. Sometimes lead to some bad architecture, but it's especially intention, it's stupidly strong. So that, that structurally, I can't imagine that, I'm trying to remember where that is. But I can't tell you, I, I, I can't really remember.
Well, it looks like it's on a very, very tall building, a relatively tall building, and it looks like there's pretty tall buildings surrounding it. Um, I don't know. I, I think it looks too, too urban.
I would, I can try and find a different image, however, I would be. I'm trying, I'm trying to talk you out of trying to talk, or trying to argue for us writing something that would not actually specifically allow that. Because it'd be hard to be that specific and architects are to a certain extent, they're going to do what they're going to do. But if I'm thinking, you know, does anyone else kind of feel that same way? I can, we're always struggling, looking for decent pictures that can, that are clearly not traditional. Just to kind of show that you can do good stuff that doesn't look like it could have been built before.
Jeff, I wonder if there's a sense of proportion that is kind of partly what Kate is, is mentioning. The, you know, that is a very large, deep canopy. And I wonder if. Well, if, you know, I mean, part of it is the style, but that it's also just very large. And granted, as, as Kate acknowledged, this might be a very large building. But it seems really, it does seem kind of like an extreme example compared to a lot of the other ones that are more.
Make you want to have a rule that has a kind of a minimum dimension for the cable? And then we're going to go to Chapin or just find a better picture.
Well, I'm actually wondering more about like the depth, like how much of the sidewalk is, is sheltered? And if that, if that is in here, I didn't see it in here anywhere.
And I would, well, I would argue, actually you want those to be deep. Otherwise they're just end up putting a, putting the drip of water right on your head. So.
Well, I mean, that to me looks more like a, that looks like a hotel in New York. Like that, that's what that reminds me of, you know, where they want people to get out of their car and be covered immediately. They can then walk into the, into the hotel. Which, you know, I don't see that applicable here. The, it does say on in C, it says, what is canopy overhangs must have a minimum nine foot clear height and be a minimum of five feet deep.
And that covers their, their own dooryard. So it doesn't actually get to the sidewalk. Now, if it's a, if it's a hotel or a, or an office or a storefront, that dooryard, at least a big part of it, it's going to probably be paved bricks or concrete. So you'll be walking on it. So if it's bad weather, you can walk underneath it. But five feet isn't really that deep. I, I'm, I assert. Chapin, do you want to?
So I have one comment, but just to comment on that discussion. It, I agree with Kate that that looks kind of gross. But to me, it looks, if we do have a hotel in this district, it would be an appropriate hotel canopy. So, and by the way, John Marquardt has his hand raised the old fashioned way.
But I'm only seeing a few people, so.
So I didn't know whether, I didn't know whether the horizontal canopy was the issue as opposed to something else. Because it's certainly a different feel than an angled canopy. But I don't, I'm not rendering an opinion on that really. I wanted to say under materials, I want to say that solar, PV solar is allowed. And I know Taylor says it's all the, the commission, the power commission, whatever it is. But we need to say that it's allowed, I think, in order for, as material wise, to say solar material is allowed for canopies. Otherwise meet these criteria. Thanks.
I would, I would argue Chapin that you should be very specific about what kind of solar material, no steel framing, right? Black, black frame panels only, et cetera. So if you're going to do it, it probably belongs on the alternative materials list because it's going to need to be very detailed.
I, I I haven't seen a PV panel that I don't like. So I, I think PV for sure. And there are the semi, I prefer the semi transparent type. But I just think we want to encourage solar. So we don't want to make it hard. We want to make it easy to do solar. So that, I, I guess I don't quite agree with you, Alex, on the detail. Thanks.
That's a lot to think about. Let's, I'm thinking we'll put our heads together with staff. And it may end up be that it, it's something, I, I think John's point about if someone wants to mount it in a way that it's really visible from the street. It probably, we probably need to be pretty specific. I was thinking on seven seventy five, that upper left, somebody could put the panels up on top. Even with a slight angle and they wouldn't be very visible. You'd really have to look for them. That might be very permissive. But how about if, how about if we staff and I, we put our heads together and see what's the thing that opens, opens the door at least.
Yeah. And to be clear, that to me, it has to meet all the other criteria. You know, it.
Oh, yes.
The, all the other aesthetic criteria. It's just a material question.
Okay, I have notes about the aesthetic and maybe, maybe dimension on the supporting cables. Cause I think that's a part of it. And I'm going to look for a better picture because I kind of think that shiny aluminum of seven seventy five might also, I suspect that's some of it too. May we move on to?
We need to hear from John.
You have a couple of hands up.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm not seeing that many.
If you squeeze your text box, you get everybody.
I tried doing it the other way and it didn't, I thought they'd get really small. It didn't work.
I also have one very quick comment, but I want John to go first.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't use the little yellow hand. I haven't figured out how to do that on my screen here. So my thing with the awnings is you talk about the type of material and it was standing seam and slate and some other types of hard material. My concern is ice and snow sliding off of them. Is there any criteria, any issues that we have to consider? For that, it could be quite dangerous, standing seam or slate will shed ice, snow very quickly and what a great deal of force.
Unless, and I'm thinking that's something that's already general taken care of in the building code. Because any, any roof in an area of snow, just the, the kind of, I call them snow dogs. Are a, are a normal, a normal thing. And on the other hand, I'm not conversant enough in your, in the building code to cite where it might say that. But the assumption is that's, that's something that is taken care of on top of outside of the form based code.
I, I know on our hack committee, we always look at entrances and things and specifically state that they need to accommodate the safety basically, so that things don't come down on top of people walking under them or near them and things. So that's why I raised the concern now. That's all.
Well, I'll confer with, I'll, I'll make that a double check item with staff. Architectural standard facade composition.
Still got Megan and Kate, Jeff on awnings.
I'm not a, I'm not a good chairperson.
Mine is super quick and then, and then Kate can go. Mine is in four B, where it says awnings and canopies must shade windows. I assume that means rather than blank walls. But shouldn't we say or doors? Since we do have examples of that. And that was my only comment. And then I'll see Kate.
Kate?
Oh, um, well, I don't want to take too much time on it, but I didn't, I don't know what a, I know you mentioned it, but I don't know what a one quarter cylinder configuration is.
Imagine one of the awnings, like, look at, look at any of the awnings on the bottom of that page. They, they come out as like, they're like a shed. They come out as a simple plane and with a little thing hanging down. Quarter cylinder would be kind of rolling around. One quarter of a circle.
I got you.
And I think they used to be on Arby's, something like that. Which might be part of the problem, but they were. And.
Is that purple one on the top right similar? I mean, it's not quite quarter cylinder, I suppose.
No, I think it's just a little boofy. That's a technical term. I'd be really embarrassed if that were a quarter cylinder. But it, it's not, although that makes me want to.
That's good. We can move on.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I don't know if I'm glad to move on or not, because this is just a difficult thing. The, the facade composition for large buildings. It, it's, it's hitting head on that issue of we're dealing with, you know, I hate to, I sort of, it's actually literally the, the true meaning of the word modern. The modern building industry is just set up, development happens at a bigger scale. Added to that, especially in half corners is we've got a few developers who own huge amounts of land. But even without that, the, the increment for development is not the small scale, fine grained stuff that happened. I almost, I'd say before our grandfathers were born. And, but that's about accurate. So what you have very often is, and bankers like to make simple loans. I blame the bankers for part of it. So you get these buildings that can be plopped down on land. And it's, and when, as a pedestrian, when you're walking by them, it can feel like, it can feel really unsettling in human, because it's like walking, if you've ever been close to a Navy warship or, or a cruise. One of the cruise liners down at the water level, you should realize how huge they are. So it's about taking these big scale developments and breaking them down into smaller elements. To, there are a number of ways we try and have the development be smaller scale. And in some frontages, we actually have a limit to how big the footprint of a building can be. This goes farther than that. So for any building that's larger on the street, longer than a hundred feet. We're asking them, we're telling them to have a composition that doesn't look like one big Star Trek building, Starship Enterprise or something. But actually break it down into vertical components. Do things to the design so it has a smaller scale. So that, and that's the facade composition. So it's a little bit different for, based on what frontage you are, you know, the storefront is the smallest. We're saying sixty or maybe it's seventy. There's some options here and could be, could be larger. Each, by the way, each of these compositions has to have an entry door on the street. The way this is set up, it's set up so there's an average, because we don't want everybody to just do sixty, 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 sixty. Because that has its own, that starts to be just the same as the one composition. We want to allow the architect to do one small and balanced out by one large, two smalls balancing out one large. So there can be some variety. We're inviting the architects to actually design something. And the other aspect of this, we try and give them some objective standards that they have to meet. And mainly so that when staff is reviewing it, they can check off boxes. We give them certain things they can do to make that different compositions. And then we, you know, like the, the different finessration proportions, figure one. That's one of those ways you can make one facade composition, composition different than the other. Clearly the windows all plump up. So the window has, so the, that composition have more window and wall, the one next to it might have less, less window, more wall. Material. Et cetera. And this is something that we first, I, in my, I don't know, more than, more than thirty years ago, I worked on some, on a project down in Florida. Where we, we took a first shot at this and it wasn't, it would have been worse without, without our doing this. I saw the first drawings the architect did. So I've, I've been with, with my colleagues, working on this for, for that whole time tweaking it. It's not, it's not a simple thing. So this, this is what we've got.
I got a quick, I got a quick comment. I'll start it off again. I, I love this. I've seen this in practice in quite a few places, you know, modern rebuilds. I think it's fantastic. I would vote for shorter and all, like in the red text. I would go with sixty and seventy five, maybe even frankly shorter on the, on the urban general and sixty and sixty. I would go for a change of all of these five criteria. And I would agree with the no facade composition can be shorter than, you don't want those weird eight foot buildings in. So that's it. I think it's great.
Okay, thank you. By the way, the shorter on, there's a Arlington County, which is just across the river, it's really kind of part of DC. Had a form based code that we wrote the first one of in two thousand and three, and they built a lot of, a lot of stuff. They recently redid this, well, they're always tweaking the form based code, but they redid this. And one of the things on our team, Justin Filango was, was the urban architect and urban designer when they were doing it for, for the county. The, the, the small bit, the twenty five foot, to keep them from doing your five footer, Alex, that's one of the things they changed. So. But, but thank you. And I agree with you. Kate?
I, I think Chapin was first, if he wants to go or I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead. It's fine.
Chapin?
Okay. By the way, when you raise your hand through the software, it puts you in the upper left corner and then people stack up in order. So if you go from upper left, you're in the order they raised their hand. But I mostly wanted to just say that I agree with this. And as we were walking around, taking you on the day that we did, we visited Winozki Essex in South Burlington and looked at half corners. We talked about this and I also want to say that I feel this, though I'm not technically capable of deciding the details. And so I'm really on this. I have no comments other than it's a good idea, whatever staff and you come up with, I will support.
I would, I would only add, no one really has the technical capabilities to know. You know, I've been banging my head against it for a couple of decades and I think it's getting better, but it's still, it's no science.
And if I could have one thing, that is that as you go up the stories, it's appropriate to make the windows smaller. And so it gets complicated that way too.
Kate?
Um, yeah, no, I, I actually want to say pretty much echo Chapin and Alex. I think it's great. It's one of the huge issues with Finney crossing those buildings is that they have not had. So yeah, all for it.
Yay. Well, all those painful iterations over all those years have paid off. Let's jump on to street walls and fences. And let me start off by saying I'm a little defensive on this one. And let me start off by saying I'm a little defensive on this one. I guess I'm a little defensive on many of them, but street walls and fences. Have all these walls lining our streets. And I want to point out that our, our minimum build outs of the lots mean that these will tend to be short and small. Also, the economy, it's expensive to do a wall. Also, we require, when the wall gets taller than four feet, it's got to have the same finessration as, as does a building. You start to treat it like a building wall. So you'll have walls that have windows and things in them. You see a lot of that if you ever go to Charleston, South Carolina. Okay, I'll stop. And it's a great place to hide huge mechanicals that you have to deal with or garbage cans, although those will generally be off the alley. But the, the bottom right picture, I think, is one of the bigger arguments. I've got a whole collection of pictures of, of pardon the term crap beside buildings that, you know, maybe they're behind a street wall, maybe they're exposed to the street. But they should be kind of shielded from view. Chapin.
Yes, just, I have a question. It's probably a question. We've been talking about wanting to have places for people to sit and enjoy the space. And I wondered if we want to say something in this section about benches or sitting walls in front of us, standing walls? That they're encouraged.
I have a, yes, I have a note from, you've said that once before, and I have a note already on that. And now I have two.
That's it. Thanks.
Megan.
Uh, yeah, my comment was somewhat similar to, to Chapin's. So just reinforcing that and I would just like, I was actually wondering if if there's a way, I, I hope this wouldn't happen in Williston, but if we could avoid the sort of hostile architecture strategies that some walls are treated with. The, the most extreme example I've seen is pieces of broken glass set into concrete on the top of walls to keep people from climbing over it. What's that?
In, in Bruges.
Yeah, I, well, the one example I was thinking of was actually in Delph, in, in the Netherlands. So.
Place, wasn't it?
What's that?
It was a great place otherwise.
Oh, yeah, great otherwise. Um, yeah, but there's a lot of other ways that, that this is done. It could be spiky metal things. Sometimes they're put to keep people from sitting. Sometimes they are put to interrupt skateboarders. But I, I would like us to make things as, at least as a first blush, that everything would be as accommodating as possible rather than hostile.
Yes.
And so, and then the height comes in, right? Like so Chapin's comment where you know, four feet is too high. Two feet is, is kind of too low. I mean, it's okay, but you know, there's a sort of perfect sitting height. And so if we could speak to that, at least in some parts, maybe the parts that are closer to a, you know, a pretty view or a, a cafe or a I don't know, a, a, a small, you know, grassy parklet or something like that, that, that the the goal of some of the walls would be that they're sitable. Yeah. So that was my comment.
Yeah, that's, that's a new thought to me. I had thought about, and I made a, my first, just need your thought was maybe if someone has a wall above a certain length, then they have to put a seat in it. But I'm taking notes and I I'm gonna, I'm remembering Jill, your hands up, but I remember something you said before about trying to avoid the kind of anti-homeless on the, on the same topic. And I definitely have a note about that. So go ahead.
So then I'm not sure if this fits in like the material section or where, but I love when in code you create like maker spaces. So whether it's a green wall, so kind of encouraging people to get creative walls that become like a part of a space that cleans and cleans in a way. And those have become more popular, I think, over time. So I'm not sure if it's materials or if it's trying to encourage like Chapin said in the earlier section around solar, but if we put it in there, maybe someone gets an idea of that might be beautiful for our space because of what our practice does or what our retail does or what we embody. And then also if, you know, thinking of walls as canvases. So if a way informed code, we talk about bringing in artists to do murals, things that beautify a space. I'm not sure if it goes here, but these are things that I want to be incorporated in. And the more you put it in, you know, these texts, the more people even think about it. So, you know, if you do, if you do a wall surface that can't be, you know, painted on or whatever the mural content is, then, you know, you miss the opportunity. Whereas if you're thinking about the materials so that it can be painted on, you have that opportunity.
And maybe we might, it's probably not too hard. There's so much effort given on signs and what defines a sign and when's it's a commercial versus art or something that we might, we might be able to, I've heard a lot of painful conversations, but I'm thinking allow art, but not Coca-Cola.
McDonald's. I'm not saying sponsors stuff. I'm saying like art with that, you know, kind of brings our community together that we must notice in residence here in Williston, or if not, is that something we could promote? And could we do it with the way that we write code? In a way that we're saying the public can meet, you know, bigger purposes than just walls that are serving a function.
I, I think it could be, it might be as simple as, as having a specific allowance.
Yeah.
Being careful that it's not.
Yeah, not everywhere, but like, could we have it, you know, kind of strategically placed throughout our entire development that you could almost do an art walk, right? You could go from one beautiful spot that has a bench like Chapin said to a, you know, three blocks later, there's another one somewhere else facing another direction.
And I'm, and I'm thinking of a couple right now that are here in DC, just, and that's.
Yeah, DC is a good example of that.
Percentage, like just my little main street down on Southeast Pennsylvania. There's a couple of really cool ones. Okay. May.
I'm just gonna join Jill in, in enthusiasm for that idea. When we were doing the, the early spring sessions with the public on form-based code, I think in April, the group I was in and Jill, I don't remember if you were in my group or not, but we were talking about playful spaces and kind of incorporating things that are maybe a little unexpected or or even kind of participatory, right? Like I'm imagining a wall that's, that is, is deep enough to hold soil and, and like, I don't know, some flowers or, or you know, maybe something you could just touch and smell and feel and, you know, or, or a wall that has like a little nook with a little seat in it. And it's just kind of like adding some whimsy. And I realized that we can't necessarily build, you know, require people to do that. But if we can open the way for it and provide visual examples of, you know, kind of fun.
You can see people do it, you know, banks that you have the Anchor Institute on the corner with the two walls. I've seen them embed green walls where it then has their logo in the green based on how they plant. And that's great, right? Because they're usually the first developed in, in, they, then they are setting a tone for like what this area is going to look like. And if we could somehow kind of write that in here, I think that would be fantastic.
Chapin.
I just want to stay on Jill's idea and what Megan just said, that we probably need a guiding body for things that are not actually sort of zoning. It's, it may be hard to put this in. It may have to be a citizen committee, like, like the hack is for the architecture in the village, that, that there may need to be a citizen body that reviews proposals that are creative. So it, that gets into the programming area, but we somehow want to note that.
Well, and yeah, I'm thinking I might start off by pushing the idea. When someone's starting to develop, take them out to lunch and persuade. Okay. May we, that was great. May we move on to entry features, front porches, stoops and canopies?
Jeff, I know you're not looking at the clock and I am. So I just want to let you know it's about eight twenty-two.
Yeah. Okay, hearing no objection, we'll move on. Just kidding. Does anyone have any specific comments on this?
You can always count on me, Jeff. I have a, one question and one suggestion, which is, which is not a lot. On the pictures, the middle picture thing, and it's not facing the street way we, I thought we said. So would that even be allowed?
You are, it's a, it's a little bit of a stretch. You're allowed to do the forecourt in the urban general too. And the urban neighborhood. So in the areas that are urban general, which possibly could have a retail use in them, but they're, the idea there's a notch more intense. You couldn't do this. And I will, I will admit to, but you're allowed to do a little, a forecourt entry to a building. It's not quite that deep.
Okay. And my one suggestion is that we mention solar canopies here under configurations permitted. Or under techniques, I'm not sure which it is, but we should just say that this is, nothing about this is prohibiting solar canopies.
Got it. Solar.
And if you want to say PB solar and, and Taylor, was it you before that I was responding to and not Alex on that? On, on being specific about what the materials are and stuff. No, it was Alex.
It was Alex. So I was, I'm keeping my mouth silent on solar. I, I, but while I'm talking, Chapin, we, you know, I'm thinking in my mind that, you know, we, we may try to find just a strategic spot to kind of say these things once. For the entire document in terms of how we treat PB solar.
Yes.
But we'll, we'll work with Jeff on the right spot for that language.
Good. And by the way, I put in the, it could perhaps be in the introduction that we are encouraging it in these ways. Thanks.
All right. So we're good.
Jeff, I had one other small comment.
Yes.
On B, on B site and accent landing, I, the first one, where it says that mounted poles like should not be mounted higher than twenty-five feet above grade. And I just wanted to say, except perhaps in private or public park spaces. I didn't know if there would be areas where there's larger areas to eliminate that shouldn't.
This wouldn't deal with, this wouldn't, this is, would be private development on the blocks only.
Okay, thanks.
So when you turn into a developer, you'll be concerned with this. Going once, going three times. Let's move on to lighting and mechanical equipment.
Oh, good. That's what I was hoping to catch up. I'm sorry, I, I might have missed it, but is, is there going to be a sort of Taft Corner standard for streetlights? Like I'm just imagining. Taylor is laughing, so I'm guessing the answer is no, and that we could end up with like eight different styles of streetlights in every different corner.
Not saying no. I'm, I, I'm, I'll try to be as brief as I can because I know we're short on time. I think this, they know, talking about the specifications for street lighting, for instance, is one of those weird areas that kind of coexists between the form-based code, street space and the public work standards. And so, you know, should we go ahead and just pick out the street light we all want now as a part of the form-based code project? I'm not sure we want to do that. Jeff wants to. Or do we want to do that kind of public work specs next? Um, I think that's kind of an open question.
Okay, fair enough. Just wanted to raise it.
It's not, I, I mean, you know, it can be a nice thing. It's not the not the end of the world if there's streetlight cacophony, as long as they're not, include Cobra heads and things that are just wrong, but there can be something nice about some kind of a plan. Later. Chapin, then Alex.
And Mike, my comment I made just a minute ago was on page sixty-one. I thought we had moved on to this about the height.
I was struggling to find, to find that and then I.
Yeah. So I was on page sixty-one, sixty-one, three B, I, where it says that lights shall not be mounted higher than twenty-five feet. So that's what I was commenting on. And I think what you said was fine. But I wanted to jump on what Megan just said. And to me, to make Taft Corners a place, one of the unifying pulling everything together aspects is how the street lighting is. And I would like the street lights to be part of the streetscape that's, if it's not in the public works specs and maintain, and done by the town, I'd like it to at least be specified by the town quite restrictively. And so I do think we should pick a example and say if we are, the town are not the ones actually installing them, that we should say it has to look like this and be spaced like that.
All right. Alex and Kate.
So I don't know if it's a step too far, but I've seen it work well where like in HOAs and things where color temperature is regulated. So you don't have like, you know, thirty different whites nowadays with LED bulbs and, and also limiting colored lights. Like X, no exterior purple lights and things, something like, you know, below twenty-seven hundred Kelvin or something.
Yeah, we sort of flirt with that, but really we just dip our toe in the water with talking about HID or fluorescent lights.
Let's data get engaged to get married to it then.
In this, okay. And my, my thought would be, there might be, it might be that that's that temperature what I've had in the past, well, in the past, because I used to do private communities, was just to, you know, give them a fixture and give them a bulb. But it's talk about daylight, in the daylight spectrum, but I don't see anything wrong with picking a Kelvin. What was the number you suggested?
I've always said like below three thousand or below twenty-seven hundred or a daylight spectrum is the same idea, though. I mean, it's just, you know, something that controls for consistency. I don't care if it's the bright white spectrum, if that's what people like. I don't, but.
No, that's, that's good for filling stations. Yeah, I like that too. And I'm just, and this is, that's interesting. This is something that kind of got toned down. In the past, we've been really draconianly tight about that. But it does, it does look weird when it's, there's a blue and a yellow and a white. All right. And I don't think anyone has a problem with that. So Kate.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to kind of echo Megan's and Chapin's comment as well about the streetlights. I think it's good to pick if we can, a general idea, so we don't have fifty million different ones.
Okay.
We will talk to staff and see if we can fight that fight with Bruce.
I would further that.
Should invite us along sometime, Taylor, and well.
That's a thought.
I don't think you really want to go to that, but sure. Well, that's a thought.
Let's move, let's move on to signage. Which is can always be interesting. You know, it's, I'm surprised I didn't put a lot of things. I guess maybe if anything that could be contentious were pink text in here, there'd be a lot of pink. You know, it's, I'm surprised I didn't put a lot of things. I guess maybe if anything that could be contentious were pink text in here, there'd be a lot of pink.
We also have a pretty robust sign ordinance already. Some of us have been through it with extreme detail in the past, so so it's, it's something we're sort of used to talking about, at least those of us who have been on for a while. I don't know if some of the newer folks have engaged with signs yet, but just a comment on our own background.
And
I just wanted to highlight for folks because it's, it's, it is a new thing that this would prohibit new freestanding signs. If you build to the pattern required by the form-based code, there's really almost never anywhere to put a freestanding sign. So that's, that's something that's just starkly different from, you know, today we allow freestanding signs. I think it makes, probably makes sense given where we're headed.
Yeah, and, and you know, businesses that are in here, there's just no way that somebody's going to drive by the freeway or even down 2A and see a sign and say, oh, I want to go over there and get my local cup of coffee or, or whatever. Go to, I want to go to work over there because I saw the, the sign 100 feet up in the air. So it's, yeah, where are you going to put it? Let's put it in the middle of the block. Sorry, Chapin.
The picture that says Ice House Revival with a vertical blade sign, that's not allowed in Burlington's code, because I know that only because what's that place on Main Street is grandfathered in.
I thought that was Nectars and it was the fact that it spins.
Nectar, oh, I thought Nectar's sign was grandfathered in and otherwise they could not have it, but I could be wrong. And right next to that where it says wall sign, so this is in number four, wall signs on page 63. The A part, the last sentence there says, in no case shall this band be higher than 20 feet or lower than 11 feet above the adjacent sidewalk. And I just, on sloped streets, I wondered if 11 feet was a little bit high for the low end of whether it should be 10 or 10, 7 is even okay with me regularly. That's just more of a question. And then
Oh, go ahead.
If we don't want to allow the vertical blade signs or vertical signs, whatever they're called, we could say they have to be horizontal. And I'm uncertain if I want to allow on the next page, on page 64, where we have the corner sign, I'm not sure that we want to allow that at all. And then under number seven, window signs, 7C, where it says no more than 10% of any upper story window may be covered with signs, I would say 20%. Because 10% is an awful small bit if you have a business on the second floor. If you have somebody with an office or whatever, I would, I would give them a little bit of space to put a sign in the window. And then under other signs, yeah, temporary sandwich board signs is 36 inches a standard because that seems awful low. I would have said at least 40 inches for a sandwich sign. You don't need to answer those questions. Those are just comments. And if they
What, go over the last one again?
On its section eight, other signs, a temporary sandwich board signs, it says up to 36 inches are permitted within the doryard area and 36 seemed awful low to me.
I think you're right. Did anyone see the, have any comment on neon signs being allowed behind the seven window signs? B.
Right, but I thought, maybe I'm not remembering correctly, but, and Matt can help us out, but I thought we did not allow neon signs in those. Or is that only outside ones?
So, so we don't allow anything that's internally illuminated outside a, you know, building freestanding. And, and we've particularly gone back in and clarified that we, we definitely include, you know, scrolling LED or even static LED message boards in that category. We do have a limited exemption for an internally lit sign that's hung in a window. And it's, it's essentially the, the open sign exemption. Because basically every business ends up having one anyway, and they're, they're fairly innocuous. So I don't have a chapter or verse in front of me, but I, I think it might be like no more than two square feet, no more than one per something. Yeah, and you know, we don't regulate content, so it could say dry clean instead of open. And we're okay with that.
It is, it is one of my consents since at some point in my life, I, in my apartment, I had a piece of old neon with an ancient ballast underneath it that made a lot of noise on. Because I, I like neon. The argument, if you're allowed inside the shop front window, it's constrained enough that it doesn't bother you if somebody living on the second floor. That's, anyway, that's, that's the thought. Kate?
Um, well, that was actually my only, my only comment on the signs was the, that those neon signs and because I was looking at that dry clean, I don't particularly like that. But then I was thinking of in the other page 64, there, there's an open sign, which is typically tends to be kind of like that. So I don't know, I guess I could, I could be persuaded either way, but my first inclination was I don't particularly want them, especially depending on how big they may be.
You still have the percentage of view that can't be blocked, although, you know, at night if they're on, it's hard to see past them, but Alex, you want to jump in?
Yeah, I would just agree with Chapin's comment on corner signs. I don't see allowing those. I'd strike that whole section.
They're also given a little bit of like Okay, oh.
And then on the neon, I thought what Matt described as our current standards better than just saying 25% and allowed. I like the current standard better. That's it.
Okay. Okay, corner windows, I would say consider them gone since no one loves them and they're just signs. Okay, and that means I'm a little bit shocked. It can't be true that we're, that we've made it through.
Jeff, could, could we talk a little bit about the pictures on the last couple pages here, page 66, 67?
Yes. Now, the 66 pictures, Justin, his, his town, New Hampshire, has a select board too in their meeting, so he's not with us and he, he sent me these pictures and took them. So I can't tell you without going back and looking again, digging these up where they're from. I apologize.
All I wanted to say is I don't like any of them. The middle one on the left, we've looked at that building before. We'd like the building, including the cornices and stuff. But the foliage or the, you know, the plantings, the planters on the street to block off the sidewalk, to me are a no-no. It destroys the relationship of the building to the street.
Yes.
And so there's something like that about each of these that I really don't like, and I can tell you what they are, and the same is true of half of the ones on the next page.
Yeah, well, the row houses on the top right are definitely a good example of something that's, you know, not bad, but just unyielding forever.
And there's no, there's no green space between the sidewalk and the street, so there's no tree line.
Oh, the, oh, yeah, the street, the street, yeah, that's not a good street. It should, it should definitely have a tree lawn. But, yeah, I really, Chapin, I really liked the, this is, I don't know why I'm saying this, but I really, I think the building on the middle right, I like that building.
I know, I know you do, and I'm, it's not a biggie for me, but I, to me, it's too tall for its size and the way the corner is upped is to me too grandiose. I don't know. But it's not terrible. It's just not, this isn't what I'm looking for in Taft Corners.
Yeah, and the bottom left is a ski line. Okay.
And I, can I just point out to Chapin, I think in that middle left photo on page 66, the one you were just commenting, hang on with the greenery. I think that's a temporary installation, and I think there's seating on the other side.
I, I think that's the idea.
I think that would be my guess that it's because it, it looks like it's a parking space like we have seen in Burlington during COVID, like where there's kind of a little cozy space for eating or whatever.
But Justin, Justin took these pictures last year during COVID in Montpelier.
Yeah, I think it's just temporary.
Yeah. I think, I think so too, but if we want to show up temporary pocket park or a temporary eating, that's not the one I would choose. It's too narrow a space that's confined, that foliage is too dense. It's just not, it's not a good example.
Oh, and, and these pictures are here for us to talk about, and I thought we might refer to them and pull them forward. They won't be in, they won't be in the code. The, on page 67, something I think worth pointing out, the middle picture on the right is an example of, actually about the best example I've seen. That's for a, a building complex. Underneath this building complex is a big parking structure and a Trader Joe's. Do you all have Trader Joe's up there? Yeah. That's one of the better entries to underground parking I've seen in part because they divide it in two. But it's like less disrupt, least disruptive to the street. It couldn't be much tighter. And then the way they have the facade doing something interesting above it.
I, I, by the way, I agree, and there's an equally nice one on Cherry Street in Burlington across from St. Paul's Cathedral in the, is it Vermont? The Bar Hotel Vermont, going into municipal parking garage, and it's very unobtrusive.
Is that, is that really right at Church Street?
No, it's two blocks down from Church Street, almost to Battery. On Cherry. Cherry, Cherry Street, almost to Battery, opposite the St. Paul's Cathedral.
Okay.
Anyway, I, I do like that picture, and I think that should be, that should be available as a picture of how you would do an entrance to a street parking.
Okay, Jill?
So, am I understanding this kind of last set of pictures as like a dump of all these examples that we'd like to potentially see or possibilities? I guess then here I would love to see green walls, the mural options, solar, like if we could get one of each of those, because we talk about them, but if we could really show like, this is kind of what we're talking about, or this is the best of what we've seen of these, so that it's visual and it's in it and it's, because I think visuals stand out so much more, especially when you're talking about art and greenery and those kinds of things.
I have a memory, and I may be making this up because I have a creative memory, among other things, that when we, we interviewed you, I'm associating some images.
Yeah, I, I, I had lots of images that I was like, this is what I'd love to see, and I dumped them all in my form to you, so you should have them somewhere.
We've got them. If Emily were
You know, you could use ones from Burlington, like that beautiful hummingbird on a brick building. I love that. I think it's so beautiful, right? So it's like, we could use ones that are already really local that could be applicable, that just kind of reminds people of like, we know how to do this Vermont, let's do it here, too.
Yep. I love it, and we will, we will dive into those archives. All right. I think I should surrender my quasi chair position.
Okay.
If, go ahead, Chapin. If we have more time, I didn't know if we could pull up the, the journal or the log thing, because I had put some comments in it, and I thought it'd be worth other commissioners commenting on the comments before staff launches into trying to respond to any of them.
I have a, I have a general solar thought, Chapin, that I'll throw your way, and we don't need to make a decision on this, but I, I've been, I've been thinking a lot about you know, your comments about, you know, essentially making parking lots solar ready. And you know, one of the things that I'm thinking about is, is a standard that perhaps wouldn't even be form-based code specific. Perhaps townwide that is, that is linked to the size of the parking lot. So essentially, you know, targeting those, those larger parking lots, I don't know what the number is, but, you know, parking lots over 30 spaces, 40 spaces, 50 spaces, whatever makes sense. Essentially requiring that those be retrofitted when a site plan amendment happens or whatever, some sort of trigger, you know, that essentially those, those parking lots be come solar ready. You know, I, I, I'm thinking that way mostly because I don't think it makes sense to, to necessarily target just this geographic area. And the fact that a lot of these areas, a lot of these developments in Taft Corners in the future will likely will be really small parking lots with a lot of shading from taller structures. So yeah, just, just to let you know, that's one of the things that we're thinking about.
That's great. I'm 100% behind that, and for Matt to hear this, probably there's plans to enlarge the parking lot behind the town hall. And it is on the south side of the town hall and is an ideal situation for putting solar canopy over the expanded lot. And so it's a great, would be a great place for us to try it out.
While we're looking at the journal, I just, I just want to confirm with staff and the PC. So we are, are we meeting the, the Tuesday after Thanksgiving? Has that been confirmed yet?
Yeah, we've, we've got that on the list of future meetings that we'll, we'll do a meeting on the 30th.
I can't, just to let people know, I can't be there on the 30th. It's my daughter's birthday, so.
How old?
She's going to be six. We're doing a little things.
Kate, that's my daughter's birthday, too.
Really?
Yeah, she'll be five, so. I was like, that date sounds really familiar. So I can't make the 30th probably either, but no, actually, my daughter will be in bed by then. She goes to bed at like 6:30. Just count me lucky.
When, when does she get up, Alex?
Yeah, yeah, you don't want to know that. Soon as the sun cracks the horizon with one beam.
Just wait, just wait till she's six.
Since we went a little over last time, maybe we should just take what we have, this bonus 10 minutes.
Megan?
Yeah.
I, I'm okay with that, but I put things in other sections beside this first one, and I just
I couldn't see them. I just thought it was just the ones
I was wondering, okay, people to see it in case they wanted to add to it.
Right.
Kate, and I would respond to that one, that we're gonna, we don't need to define it as a code item, public green space, because we can draw it, and we, we are drawing it. So, you know, we can say this pretty precisely, this is, this is, this will be, this shall be green.
I, yep, so this is the idea that there's a goal that within every, say, quarter, every 10 acre area, you know, a certain size of space, that there'd be some great public green space.
Okay, I'm actually thinking like a three-minute walk. You should have at least quarter acre.
Something like that, to make it actually a target. Let's keep going. Let's keep going. I don't know who's scrolling.
Trash receptacles, and that's something we're going to, we haven't really had time to discuss with staff, but that's like the streetlights. We can, we can give a spec, and that's not unusual for form-based codes.
That's the end.
I think the people who live in the rest of Williston are going to, once this thing gets a little bit of critical mass, they're going to be coming here all the time taking advantage of stuff, different things to do, and then they're going to go home. So I, I expect that's going to be a natural partnership or contrast. So come here and enjoy what's different about it, and then go home, so.
The animosity in Essex between the village and the town had to do with, it has a lot to do with identity, but also with services. In other words, there are additional public services in a dense area like this that are paid for out of the tax base of the whole town, and there winds up being animosity about who's paying for what. But also I don't want people to think that Taff Corners is Williston, because that will create a, a split identity. And so there is more to this, I think, Jeff, that I want to be cogitating on, and it's how we, sort of how we frame it.
Yeah. I have to say, as far as taxes go, the higher density stuff pays the freight. I, I don't know what's going on in Essex, but this, this area is going to be keeping the tax rate lower for existing.
What, what's happened with a lot of the development in Taff Corners so far is that crime and fire department needs have been accelerated. Police and fire needs have been accelerated by people who are not residents, who are coming there to shop and steal or whatever. And so people wonder why we're supporting that.
You, I need to refer you to some of the Joe Minicozzi videos where he talks about value, land value per capita or per acre.
And you don't need to convince me. I'm, I'm just, you know.
Yeah, this will, yeah, this will be very different than that. Anyway.
One number I'd like everybody to put in their heads, but understand that it's the back of the envelope that Melinda and I did one afternoon, is nine, nine miles. The answer is nine miles is the miles of town road outside of the growth center that are paid for by the revenue that comes from inside the growth center. And that's, that's only looking at property tax. That's not, that's not including where the local option sales tax, which is a third of your municipal budget, is, is generated. So just, you know, the growth center today pays for its own roads plus nine more miles of town road outside of its boundaries, even, even with what's there right now, which is, yeah, you're absolutely right, Chapin, on services, we go the other way right now. And, you know, I think eventually that'll, that'll balance out, but.
I, I just think we want to frame it in a way that makes the whole town own it and not see it as them and us, but as, as part of Williston and vice versa.
Do you know, Matt, out of how many roads, like it pays nine, but are we talking like out of 300 miles of roads, or are we talking like 50 miles of roads?
No, it's, it's closer. It's, I want to say it's between 50 and 80 total miles of town road in town. I've got, I've got it somewhere. I'll, I can write it up in a way that's more than just Melinda and I chatting on Teams, but. It's a, it's a good chunk of town road outside of, outside of the growth center.
Matt, I have a quick question. I have in my notes that you and Melinda have been working on the official map. And I wondered if you had any updates on that. You're both laughing now, so that's a little worrisome, but. But I wondered if, in our last couple of minutes, if you just wanted to give us an update on that.
Well, yeah, you know, so what, what we want to do is make sure that what we show in the growth center is aligned with the road alignments in the regulating plan. And what we've talked about but not done graphically yet is, do we add dimension to those grid streets that are proposed in the growth center as compared to sort of the dashed line elements that we're going to see townwide, since we have them anyway. And the last part is, is really for me, Melinda, and I think Taylor, to talk about where the, the tier system within our official map, we had tier one because it's, because it's scoped and, you know, we know what we want to do. And tier two was like, well, we know we want it, but we don't know much about it yet. So now in, in the growth center, we have this other thing that is maybe, maybe a tier one and a half. Where we know right where we want to put it, plus or minus, you know, 50 feet, but we haven't scoped it. So I'm just bringing this idea on Taylor right now. But that's really where we're at. And, and you know, the strong desire here is to present the official map concurrently with the hearing draft of, of the form-based code, so that those are together in front of the slackboard.
That's an idea. Let me think about it.
The other thing is Jeff was circulating amongst us, remember the sort of the magic marker cycle track loop idea, and, and we are paying attention to that as, as we get into, when we talk about a street space and having that bikeable network be part of the growth center as well. So that brings that to mind. Yeah, we're, we're still doing all that stuff despite all the development review we have to dive into every week under the current code.
All right, motion to adjourn?
Oh, one, one thing. Thank you, everybody, for all of your hard work on all of those bylaw amendments related to parking, watershed protection, cannabis super fund, and impact fee relief for affordable. You might have noticed I wasn't gone for very long. That was a good thing. It all passed. So thank you. Good job.
Thank you for shepherding it all, Matt. That's great. All right. Thank you, everyone. And except for parents of small girls turning five and six, we look forward to seeing you two weeks from tonight.
Probably going to see me, too, unfortunately.
Thank you all.